Probably depends on the weather.
I've seen that occur before and that's dangerous.
Yeah, I didn't do it in a short time. I'm letting him have his way.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I don't know.
He said her shape was the chief of staff.
Was trying to crawl through the other side of the car. I mean, was trying to.
She just graduated, so I asked her, I said, where does she work? And she said, wow.
We're not going to let you go.
Everybody runs hundreds of thousands.
Good morning, how are you?
I remember you, you took me there.
What's with the beard?
It was me.
Doesn't make you look good.
I knew it was.
Been a influence since I was eighteen.
I'm trying to be like, God, this kid is working.
I guess she is.
That's true.
You say take more of the dirt, so.
And it may make you look better if I say it, I tell you.
I gotta take the living.
They were too good looking back then.
Let me tell you, if you just seen us down in the moral river or whatever, we're popping up in the damn for five.
I was gonna vote up to him, but I kept your support, Cameron would've been here to lead.
Of course.
Law is. Law is.
Sorry.
Excuse me.
You're getting it.
My car and drive to travel. No, no, man, get out, speak to these guys, see how good they are. You get on me like that, you're wasted.
Oh, no, man.
What branch is that? Horse may accuse you being there.
But I wouldn't. Richard would be a little shy. Law is.
Never has been.
I gotta get over.
He's either somewhere.
I gotta get October out of the way.
Mr. Ford.
They're playing around. You're doing twenty or sixteen. You'll be here. I love it seven and one part time.
You signed for lots of paper clips. Where they at? Two years, five days, seven hours, and the.
How are you, sir? Pretty good. Pretty good.
My boss.
Are we supposed to be leaving? Should we? Is that, does it sound like?
You talking about a grant you got from M M R C?
Yeah.
Bill. So our whole main security department.
Do you need something for the meeting?
That's, that's the thing I was gonna bring up. I think we put in some of that, it's just our annual program.
Okay.
Keep, keep the funds going forward, which they get approved for.
Oh, I didn't realize that, too. About large sum.
Wasn't quite there. We normally get twenty, I think this year we got thirty-five.
Okay.
About all the.
Oh, okay.
Good morning.
So it's stuff that's done, but we don't really pay for it? So do we have to track that at all, or?
Well, we did. We scored thirty-seven points.
Okay.
It's a game.
That didn't help. We needed an inventory, because we probably keep all the inventory.
He still scores thirty-seven points.
I personally keep an inventory.
Okay.
There's pressure on him that day. He threw the inseparable value in there. He dropped. Put a strap around his.
Well, everybody couldn't make it today. Well, so the reason we tried to adjust it was because the chiefs are meeting tomorrow. Right. I thought, I thought Pee-wee said he couldn't make it today. He said, he's meeting. I don't think that'll take you long.
It won't take very long, but it requires the stuff.
To.
Kind of jump in.
Top doing.
Okay. Yes, I saw it. Okay, we're going to call the commission to order. We got a fair amount of stuff on the agenda today, but we do, I just want to give everybody a heads up, we have a tax abatement hearing at nine-ten that we're gonna do by telephone. So we're trying to get a few things done before then, then we're gonna have to pop on the phone when Melody sends it into us. That should be relatively quick, but I would ask you all to indulge us at nine-ten, we have to take that call, and for everybody to be quiet, because it's hard enough to hear on the, hard enough to hear on the speakerphone without anybody talking, much less with anybody talking. So we're gonna jump in and get some of the quick things done, so that we can save lots of time for the long and depth discussions. Signing a contract from D H S S, oh, bleh, to conduct childcare health consultations.
This is a contract that pays for one of our nurses to go and teach classes for the childcare providers on healthy behaviors and activities for the kids.
Correct. entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call roll.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Yes, by roll call vote, that's approved. Betty, I forgot to ask you if you had any minutes of reports, sorry.
No, I don't.
I didn't see anything on your notepad, so I figured maybe I didn't, and I forgot to do commissioner committees on reports or announcements of upcoming meetings and or events, sorry, guys. Trying to get through the agenda here.
I don't know.
Trying to roll today. It's leadership Friday.
Leadership is Friday. Okay.
Eastside, there's association barbecue tomorrow night at McLung. Board of Directors for the Board of Realtors tomorrow.
And just that, I'm gonna meet with Larry and some others on that Eugene area water study next week, Wednesday on the first, so.
All right, let's do our budget adjustments real quick. Second reading of budget adjustment number fourteen, twenty-one thousand eight dollars, which is the insurance payment we got on the damage at EMS building. entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Call roll.
Jeff.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Chris.
By roll call vote, budget adjustment fourteen is approved. Budget adjustment number fifteen, two thousand dollars for the supervised access grant. entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, call roll.
Mark.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
By roll call vote, budget adjustment number fifteen is approved. Budget adjustment number sixteen, ten thousand dollars for the WIC Medicaid grant. entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, call roll, please.
Chris.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes, by roll call vote, that's approved. Signing of surplus title for the sheriff's vehicle.
Two of them.
Are these salvage titles, or just, are we selling them?
Auctions, do I understand?
Yes.
Auctions?
Yep.
Okay. entertain a motion to approve the two surplus titles.
So moved.
Second. Call roll.
Mark.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Yes.
By roll call vote, surplus titles are approved. Wow, we got through a lot of that stuff very quickly.
Is that one or two?
It's two. Okay. All that in three minutes.
Are we going now?
Four minutes. So I think what we will do now is, I guess we just jump into the nine-one-one discussion. And then, with everyone's understanding, we will have to take a break here pretty shortly, once that call comes in and we do our tax abatement hearing. So thank you all very much for attending, we really appreciate it. Just to kind of lay the table, October fifteenth is the deadline for us to renew the existing nine-one-one agreement with Jefferson City. It's our understanding that that amount will be increased this year, in part just by inflationary pressure, I think it's four percent or something like that, but also because they're doing a significant capital expansion, which my understanding is approximately four hundred thousand dollars, of which we're obligated for a quarter. So this next year, our payment will be nearly five hundred thousand dollars if we stay in the agreement, therefore, we have to make decisions fairly quickly. We had a fairly in-depth discussion.
Last week.
Last week, with the sheriff and with Mike Schertz. Asked you guys to attend, to give us some updates, particularly if you all don't mind, I don't mean to put Gary, Jim, and Mike on the spot, but you guys are on the nine-one-one commission, or committee, and would very much appreciate you guys kind of giving us an update on what's going on with the nine-one-one advisory committee, and what information you all are getting that candidly, we're not getting any information up here, so it'd be good to know what they're presenting to you all, and what you're all's take on that is. And again, I don't mean to be rude, Gary, but at some point, I'll have to interrupt you when that call comes in.
Well, first off, our meetings are open. Sheriff's invited, we've got a group that we're sending out those emails to on that aspect. As far as the commission, I mean, they are upgrading the telephone system, so there is gonna be the investment on that aspect. I do have some nine-one-one reimbursement numbers, I'll kind of wait on those, since we're gonna get interrupted, so I can cover those on that aspect of that side of it. But basically, from the piece that I've been told and get shared with on that aspect, the system upgrade expense, actually, that's currently happening is you do not have. And I have some concerns of what I saw in the paper, because I think some of those numbers are off, they're very low. I think your expenses are gonna be a lot higher than that. I'm gonna share those when we can stay in discussion, those on that side of it and stuff. But some things that you have to consider if you do it, is also the maintenance fees that's gonna go along with each of those systems. So there's gonna be a yearly reoccurring expense on that aspect. And then the question mark of people, the number of people that you're gonna have, because you gotta remember, it's a twenty-four-seven center, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, so I have some concerns about that. Plus, I'll be honest, as a citizen, I'm on the commission for supposedly county and city aspect, so I live in the county. I have some concerns about, you know, if we're duplicating services, are we just adding expenses that are unnecessary for our county? And over time, that starts to erodes the budgets where we can do other things on that aspect. But some of the things I'd like you to consider is, when you look at it, is the maintenance fees, as well as the equipment that it's gonna take, and what kind of payoff, if you put that into your solution or into your budget, what that's gonna increase on that aspect of it there. The other is, what level of service are we working towards? You know, are they gonna be eight, ten, twelve hour shifts with the people? Because I can tell you, when I went on the commission, on commission of the advisor council, I went and spent two and a half, three hours down there. I'd invite any of you down there, all you'd have to do is call Lieutenant Wildy ahead of time, and he'd let you be there. I guarantee you, after three hours, you'd leave and you'd have a new appreciation for what's done in that center. I left three hours later and had a splitting headache, and they said it was slow when I was there. I could not do the job. So that's one thing I think we have to remember, and I understand we've got to look at the dollars on that aspect, but we need to consider that. What type of services do we want to have? And that's gonna be a big factor in that part of it, because then, that changes your numbers. Because you have to always plan in the center is, for full capacity, for issues that happen. Because once the issues happen, it's pretty hard to call them back in. We've received, last year, we worked through one issue that sheriff had. Other than that, I'll be honest, we've not heard of any complaints. Are there small things that happen occasionally? And I think the police department handles those, so we don't get involved in that aspect. But over the years, that I've been involved now, several years, that's the only major issue that's came through the advisory commission. Last year, I'll be honest, I'm gonna have to, I can't remember exactly, but it's one you had a concern about, it came up through our meeting, we discussed that, that was when they were in the interim of.
That was about the, the toning?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not fixed.
Okay. Okay.
It's not fixed? Could you explain that issue, Greg, so that we have a feeling for what we're talking about?
When you, when you tone, you put out tones on the importance of the call, you know, if it's something simple, you may get a single tone, if it's a gunfire in progress, you may get a four tone, and it goes from one to four tones, and it's a pretty significant tone. However, it comes across our system as a very mild chirp, and unless you're intently listening at that moment, you don't, you don't catch the tone. That's it.
And nobody's worked at figuring that out?
I don't, I don't, it's still the same. I don't have an answer, other than it still does the same thing in our system.
So there is part of lack of communication, because the problem is, is that was brought up to the commission, we just had a meeting last week, that was never brought to the advisor, now, I can't say commission, I shouldn't be saying advisor commission, on that side of it, but that was never brought back.
Well, and I wasn't at that meeting, I was recovering from surgery in the hospital.
And stuff. So I mean, that's the only thing, is the advisor commission can only do their job if it's brought to our attention, on that aspect of it, on that side of it, so. Oh, well, how close are we to time? Because if I get into the numbers, I.
I mean, I, it's, she's supposed to call in any moment now, so I mean, I think that we can continue to kind of plow forward, I don't want to get too far into your presentation and then have to pull the chain on you, but I don't know that there's any reason to stop moving forward. If she doesn't call in, then I guess we won't have a tax abatement hearing.
Okay. Well, the numbers that I've been given, when you, throughout the numbers, I asked chief to give me the numbers of the amounts that the county has been charged, and you may have not seen this one, because that budget is not finished, but fiscal year 2015, the amount for the county is three forty-nine, four sixty-four, and I read in the paper the four hundred thousand. Fiscal year 2014, I've been shown is three fifty-eight, two twenty-eight. And if you go back, we've never hit that four hundred thousand. I guess that's the question is, that I have, knowing where are those numbers coming from, and have we pulled from the actual check that we're writing to the city?
I mean, I think we've just said it's, oh, she there? I think we've, just for the record, I think we've just been saying it's been somewhere under four hundred thousand. I mean, it's in, it's above three fifty and it's under four hundred, so we've just been using a round number. I don't think that's a, you know, we haven't been trying to peg it to an exact dollar or cent.
Okay. So that's one of the questions there, because if you look at the numbers just on what was presented in the paper last week, you know, you're break even, depending on how many people you have service the center, is gonna be a real challenge on that aspect. The other part is, a citizen, like I told you, the concern I have is, we start splitting services, the more the challenge that we have of having less, having challenges with those nine-one-one calls. So that's my point, that I want, there's, you know, other things that can be said, but that's, I think the biggest question is, is when you look at, too, if you look at your budget numbers, and I don't know what all was figured in those, but I did some rough calculation, being in business, you have to figure the benefit side, too. I know the lowest salary in the nine-one-one center, and that's currently in place, is thirty-one, four sixty-six. If you put a forty percent benefit package on there, a figure in their vacation, sick leave, whatever they get in health insurance, those aspects and stuff, you're looking about forty-four thousand dollars on that. If you put a forty percent piece on that aspect, at times eight employees, that's about three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, just on eight people. And then if you put four part-time through that.
Now I gotta interrupt, I'm sorry, Gary, I do apologize. Pick this up. This is Mark Ellinger.
Good morning, this is Ty White.
Hi, Ty, this is, I'm Mark Ellinger, I'm the presiding commissioner, I have the other commissioners here with me, Jeff Helsher and Chris Shepherdley. We also have Larry Vincent, who is the collector of revenue, and you are now live to do your appeal of the tax penalties as you've presented. So I'm gonna let you go ahead and present your case, and then we may have some questions for you and/or Larry, okay?
Okay. Really what I put in my email, I'm asking to, as a courtesy, if you all waive the penalties, so that I can settle the debt that I have for my personal property taxes from, I believe, two thousand and eleven, because I left the state in two thousand and twelve. And most recent development is, I was let go from my job on eighteen, so that's why I'm available this morning. So that's pretty much it. I mean, I explained explicitly in my email to you, that I'd like to get this debt revoked.
Okay. You guys have questions, gentlemen? Chris?
I can't, I can't hear.
Right now, it's just silence for a moment.
Oh, okay.
I'm revisiting the email again to.
Is there any reason why you didn't inquire about the tax bill when, when you did not receive it? Did you just totally forget about it? Or, I mean, it's your responsibility to make sure that the taxes are paid, whether you get the bill or not?
No, I did receive the bill before I left the state. I was not aware, as I indicated to Mr. Vincent, he actually informed me when we spoke a couple of weeks ago, that penalties continue to accrue. It was my understanding that once it reaches, like, so many, so, so much amount, it would stop. And he said that it stops, but then it picks back up, I forget which month he said it picks back up, and it continues to do that year-round, so I was not aware that penalties were gonna continue to accrue. And I was really forced with the decision to register my car in another state, or try to juggle both, and I was unable to do so financially. I was unable to pay three hundred, and at that time, it was over, I think, four hundred something dollars, plus also register my car in the state of Indiana. Indiana does not require you to pay personal property taxes in order to register your vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
The two-ten interest penalty, Larry, is that just this year?
No, that's, that would be.
That's the accrued?
Yeah.
From, from two thousand and eleven?
Well, twenty, or two thousand and eleven.
And there is nowhere on, because I lived in Cole County for a substantial period of time, and I don't ever recall reading anything on the actual tax bill that comes that says that the penalty will continue to accrue year after year after year. Again, I was very ignorant of that fact. I, I saw, like, once you get to, like, December, it stops, like, at a certain amount, it doesn't go any higher, so I had no indication whatsoever that it would continue to bill year after year. I don't, there's not even anything written in small print that it does that. So he did make me aware of that fact.
Okay. Larry, did you have something?
The only thing I have is that we did send her a bill, forward her a bill to her, when she moved to Indiana, to her Indiana address, we didn't receive any return mail or anything, that shows on there, that once she moved, we didn't send her that bill. We would've sent her subsequent delinquent tax bills in twenty-twelve and twenty-thirteen and twenty-fourteen.
Did you receive any of those additional delinquent tax bills, Ms. White?
No, sir, I did not. As a matter of fact, I did explain to Mr. Vincent that the address that they had on file for me in Indianapolis was not correct. As a matter of fact, a phone company actually contacted me and said, they sent some literature to, to seven thirty-seven North Van Croft Street, and they still haven't gotten it back. So I don't know if that means because someone, I mean, really, it's up to the person residing there to put, does not live here, in order for that mail to be returned. So the fact that they just told me that recently as well, just further confirms for me that obviously someone is there still getting the mail, or they're throwing it away. I mean, I've done that, I'm not gonna sit here and pretend, if the mail continues to come to my house and it doesn't belong to me, I throw it away. I contacted the landlord recently and said I've had some bill, and she'll tell me, well, throw it away, or if it's something that's really important and she knows the person, she'll have me to mail it to her. So I'm, I'm not denying anything. My request was simply as a courtesy, that you all would waive the penalties, since one, I've never asked the commission for anything, and I've never had taxes delinquent for this period of time. The one time that I did have delinquent taxes, I made payment arrangements with Mr. Vincent and visited his office on a regular basis and paid off that debt, and I believe that was in two thousand and nine, if I'm not mistaken.
It was actually in two thousand and eleven for her twenty-ten taxes.
I, I lived in Arizona from two thousand and seven to two thousand and eight, I lived in the state of Kansas, until two thousand and nine. I returned to Jefferson City, Missouri, February two thousand and nine. So when I was set up on a payment arrangement with you, I believe that was in two thousand and nine, or it could've been two thousand and ten. Nonetheless, I did resolve the debt.
She did resolve the debt, I had the printout from it, that we, it was done in August of two thousand and eleven for the twenty-ten taxes. I allowed her to pay the base amount, gave her thirty days to pay the penalties and interest, the full penalties and interest, or we would have her registration revoked, and she paid within thirty days.
That is correct.
But we did not waive any penalties and interest.
No, at that time, I didn't even request that.
I'd be willing to work with you on a payment schedule for these, with the payments and penalties, as you did before, but I don't know if I, it says right on the bill that there's penalties, and it doesn't say that they're gonna stop, and it doesn't say that they will not stop.
Yes, I'm not, and again, I'm not disputing that they're a penalty. I was not aware that penalties continue to accrue year after year after year after year. So those are three years' worth of penalties that I wasn't aware of. My understanding, again, would be just based on reading it, because it's not on there, is that at some point, it would cap off. Almost like even when you don't register your car, after thirty days, there's a, you're a penalty, but it doesn't continue to accrue year after year. Once it reaches a certain threshold, it stops, and that's the total amount that is due. So there was no, I had no inclination whatsoever that the penalties would accumulate, and will continue to accumulate, if I hadn't got back to your office.
I mean, that's just a question for Larry, I mean, I don't even know, does she still own the car? And if not, I mean, I, I can.
Does she still own the car?
Yeah.
The two thousand and eight Nissan?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean.
And I still have a lien holder.
Regardless if she had outstanding taxes.
I can't, I can't hear.
Regardless if you had outstanding, he asked, his question was, and I explained to him that regardless if you have outstanding taxes, regardless of what car you own, you still can't get it registered in Missouri without paying delinquent.
No, I can register it in the state of Indiana with no problem, because they don't require that. My car is still registered in the state of Indiana.
I don't know, I'm not inclined to waive the penalties, but I'm like Jeff, I mean, if we can work with you on a, on a payment schedule there, just because it sets a precedence for everybody else that has a bad situation to come up and plead their case and try to get us to waive the penalties, so I'm not inclined to waive them, but we could work with you on maybe a payment schedule.
And I agree, I mean, I think that a payment schedule makes sense, and, you know, we're, we're supportive of that, because in the end, that makes everybody whole and gives you an opportunity over a period of time to come up with the tax and the penalties. I can't see waiving it based upon what you filed with an appeal, and frankly, with what the law says. So if there's anything else you have, Ms. White, please address it now, and then we think we'll take a vote on your appeal.
Well, I, I lost my job on Thursday, so, I mean, even coming up with the base amount at this point would be fairly difficult for me.
2011 for the 2010 taxes. I allowed her to pay the base amount, gave her 30 days to pay the penalties and interest, the full penalties and interest, or we would have her registration revoked, and she paid within 30 days.
That is correct.
But we did not waive any penalties and interest.
No, at that time, I didn't even request that.
I'd be willing to work with you on a payment schedule for these, with the payments and penalties as you did before. But I don't know if I, it says right on the bill that there's penalties, and it doesn't say that they're gonna stop, and it doesn't say that they will not stop.
Yes. I'm not, and again, I'm not disputing that they're our penalty. I was not aware that penalties continue to accrue year after year after year after year. So those are three years' worth of penalties that I wasn't aware of. My understanding, again, would be just based on reading it because it's not on there, is that at some point, it would cap off. Almost like even when you don't register your car, after 30 days, there's a, you're a penalty, but it doesn't continue to accrue year after year. Once it reaches a certain threshold, it stops, and that's the total amount that is due. So there was no, I had no inclination whatsoever that the penalties would accumulate and will continue to accumulate if I hadn't got back to your office.
I mean, that's just a question for Larry. I mean, I don't even know, does she still own the car? And if not, I mean, can.
Do I still own the car?
Yeah.
The 2008 Nissan?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
I mean.
And I still have a lien holder.
Regardless if she had outstanding taxes.
I can't, I can't hear.
Regardless if you had outstanding, he asked, his question was, and I explained to him that regardless if you have outstanding taxes, regardless of what car you own, you still can't get it registered in Missouri without paying delinquent.
No, I can register it in the state of Indiana with no problem, because they don't require that. My car is still registered in the state of Indiana.
I don't know. I'm not inclined to waive the penalties, but I'm like Jeff. I mean, if we can work with you on a, on a payment schedule there, just because it sets a precedence for everybody else that has a bad situation to come up and plead their case and try to get us to waive the penalties. So I'm not inclined to waive them, but we could work with you on maybe a payment schedule.
And I agree. I mean, I think that a payment schedule makes sense. And, you know, we're supportive of that because in the end, that makes everybody whole and gives you an opportunity over a period of time to come up with the tax and the penalties. I can't see waiving it based upon what you filed with an appeal and frankly, with what the law says. So if there's anything else you have, Ms. White, please address it now, and then we'll, I think, we'll take a vote on your appeal.
Well, I lost my job on Thursday. So, I mean, even coming up with the base amount at this point would be fairly difficult for me.
And we would leave, if we have a payment plan, we would leave that up to you and Mr. Vincent to work out what that plan would be. And we'd ask, you know, Larry, take into account all the facts and circumstances in this situation.
And would that still, would it still be the same as before, where he did allow me, and, I mean, he took my word, and I did also keep my word and came in and made those payments, but he allowed, he allowed me to be set up on a payment arrangement as such that he still gave me my personal property pay paperwork so that I could go register my car in the state. Ideally, I would like to have it registered in the state and not have to register in Indiana. I don't mind either way, but I would like to get the debt resolved because it is my debt. But if we could do like we did before, that would help me tremendously because I would like to go ahead and, my life supply contract to expire for months. So that's not even a concern for me at this point. But I would like to, if that is the case.
I'm fine with that if we haven't. I think, I think we're all in agreement with that, and I think Mr. Vincent's in agreement with that. When.
But I would be able to do 30 days because at this point, I'm not working.
Well, we would ask you to work with Mr. Vincent directly to come up with a plan that you all are comfortable with.
Well, I also want the commission to be aware of what that plan is because if it's something that I'm not in agreement with because I'm not able to do it, then I'm left with having to send another letter to appeal that decision. So I would like for us to come up with a reasonable timeframe collectively that we're all in agreement with so that I, I don't want it to a situation where I'm like, well, Mr. Vincent, I can't do this. I mean, 60 days at this point would be unreasonable for me because right now, I have no, no, no job. I have an interview on Thursday. I, you know, I thank God that I am credentialed in the state, so I do have, you know, opportunities available to me that someone might not. But I don't put all my eggs in one basket. I might get there and they may not be interested, or vice versa. But I'm not just sitting around on my laurels and doing nothing.
Okay.
I'm gonna leave that up to Larry.
Larry, go ahead.
I'm standing to leave it up to Larry.
Taysha, I'll give you a call later, and we'll work something out that's, what I would require is the same thing I did last time, is that you pay the base amount, and then we'll work out the penalties and interest and allow you an ample time to pay that off.
I don't have the base amount right now, is what I'm saying. I would like to just have that entire debt amount, the base amount and the penalties divided over a course of what I would think would be six months to get me, let me have the opportunity to pay off the entire debt amount. I don't have it. I'm not gonna sit here and lie to you and tell you that I have 300 and some odd dollars.
Ma'am, if you can work with Larry on this, y'all can work it out.
I mean, we're not.
We're saying we're fine with y'all working the deal out.
Just so you know, we don't have the authority to set the payment plan. All we can do is waive the penalties or not waive the penalties, and I think we're not gonna do that. We're willing to work with you and encourage the collector to work with you. I think he's indicated he's willing to do that. And at that point, I think you would have to negotiate with him. Excuse me, there is.
I don't wanna negotiate, sir. This isn't a matter of negotiation.
Well, from our.
I'm asking you all collectively to, you asked me to call you, and I accepted the call even though I thought I was gonna be working. I'm fairly busy this morning because I have to go back to the place that let me go to type out, get some things for some trainings I completed.
Okay.
The fact that I have, the reason why I wrote to the commission is because Mr. Vincent and myself were not able to come to an agreement. It wasn't, he wasn't being rude, but he was not able, we were not able to come to an agreement. So that's what I had to write into the commissioner. I want to make sure that you all are aware. We're all on the same page.
When do your pla, ma'am?
Interpretation.
Ma'am, when do your plates expire?
My, I have the option to renew in Indiana by December.
So you have basically three months until you have to renew your plates, correct?
Yes. I can renew them to Indiana now if I wanted to. You don't have to wait. Indiana's different. I don't know why, but you don't have to wait until your plates expire. Once you're within a certain timeframe, you can actually renew them.
You're on TV.
When you reach that timeframe.
Then my suggestion is, my suggestion is you work with Mr. Vincent to come up with a way to have that tax that's due paid before you need to renew your plates. You can work on the other three months after thereafter or some other period of time.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
But in the end, I've got to call the hearing to arrest because we can't.
I understand what you just said, sir.
We cannot negotiate a payment plan with you.
Yes. And I'm not trying to negotiate.
Well, and I'm just saying that all, ma'am, listen to me, please.
I'm saying I didn't understand the last part you just said. Could you please clarify before you started on that part? I didn't understand that.
Basically, what Commissioner Ellinger is saying is that you have to pay the base amount of 328 by December to get a paid receipt. That would allow you to renew your plates in Missouri in December. And we would allow you additional time to pay off the penalties and interest.
Okay. I'm not sure who's talking to me right now, but I really appreciate you breaking that down. That makes sense. I did not understand what was needed before that. So I really appreciate it.
So that's, so we'll move forward on that basis. At this point, I have to call a vote on your request to waive the penalties because you've presented that to us. We have to vote on it.
Sure.
So I would entertain a motion regarding her appeal to waive the penalties.
I'm gonna make a motion not to waive the penalties and fees. Interest, I'm sorry.
Okay. So your motion is to not waive the penalties and interest. I'll second.
A motion, second, to not waive the penalties and interest. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. So Ms. White, you will talk directly to Mr. Vincent, and in accordance with what we just discussed, we'll work out the plan, okay?
Who's talking to me?
That's Commissioner Ellinger.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. White. Good luck.
Well, bless you.
Bye-bye.
Thanks.
I'll take that. All right. Gary, again, I apologize for that, but. So let's go back. I think you were in the process of discussing budget numbers on a going-forward basis. And I believe you had outlined the employee cost, and we're getting into, I believe, the capital side of it.
Yeah. So I think we've really gotta look at those numbers when you look at employee cost. I mean, again, mine may be different, but I looked at it from the business aspect of how many employees do you need. You also gotta figure benefits, everything that goes with that. So the question mark there is, does that hit our number? And then when you look at capital cost, and I don't have any numbers on capital cost. You know, I can go back in what the fiscal budget's been, and the one thing that I question is, we used the 400,000 number, is everything that I've been seeing on that aspect. And you can tell probably if you ask and find out what the checks was cut, but from 349 this next year to 358 this year, 355. So to me, there's a variance there that you need to look at. And then probably the other concern that I have is, you know, transferring of calls and, you know, the level of service to make sure within the county and city, we keep that continual on that aspect. So understand the toning. I will take that back. But I think when we look at this, let's make sure we put all the pieces together when we look at that aspect. And my other point is, being a county citizen and then being a Jefferson City and business in Jefferson City, I have a real concern that the more we divide, the more that all we do is increase cost on that aspect. And I'm a firm believer in that we've worked together in the past. If there's issues, those can be resolved and worked through, and we can create a better county and city working together than we can ever apart because we're not big enough. It's not like Jefferson City is growing out, growing big time. That's one of our challenges. We need to really find that growth so we can continue to grow in this area versus kind of trying to split hairs, so.
All right. Thank you, Gary. Any questions for Gary? And I've got one real quick. As a committee, part of the kind of mission of the committee was when issues came up, you guys would address them and ensure that the police department would resolve them. Obviously, we, an indication that an issue was raised, albeit there was not follow-up from our side on it, but obviously, that issue has not been addressed. Are there any other issues that come up from the city or come from our side that have not been addressed? I mean, in the end, you all are an advisory committee. I understand that. The police department has sole, total, and exclusive control. They choose to tell you guys to leave, they can pretty much tell you that. I just wonder if you're getting full and complete cooperation from the police department on anything and everything.
Since I've been on the commission, like I said, the only thing that's come forward to the advisory commission that I remember over the last couple of years is the toning. And I will, I'm chair now, so I keep the minutes or I approve the minutes that goes through that aspect. And as issues come, that's one thing we'll do, is we'll move forward and we'll have them on the list. But at this time, you know, like I said, there can be a lot of little things that come on throughout. And to be quite honest, to me, that's not what the advisory commission's for. If they're small, you know, Captain Wheeler or sheriff comes and they talk on that aspect, if they bring something among the commission, you know, it should be the bigger ones. Because the small things, to be quite honest, it should be handled directly, I truly believe. But if it's big enough that they're not getting the response, that, to me, is what our committee's for. And if I'm wrong, somebody's gonna tell me, because then they can find a replacement for me.
All right. Any other questions for?
I mean, I think for, I think for me, you know, one of the biggest challenges should be is that, yeah, we're all emergency services, but yet we're operating on basically two different systems. The city has their own radio system and EMS and the sheriff and the highway patrol and Capitol Police, and everybody else is operating on MoS-WIN. And, you know, so therein lies kind of a dysfunction. And so, you know, when we start looking at this 911 system, you know, the city's got all these repeaters everywhere and that are kind of antiquated. And so, you know, what's the cost to update all that stuff? And have they addressed any of that? I mean, I know the city, you know, didn't convert to the MoS-WIN. Is that correct? I mean, am I talking right?
Your, yes, the premise is correct.
Right. I mean, so, you know, truly, if we were all working together, wouldn't we all be on kind of the same system and doing stuff?
Yeah. I don't have the history on that, Chris, so I can't really answer that aspect. That was a decision.
I understand.
That they made on that aspect. But even with them being separate systems, we're not hearing those big issues. I mean, the big thing that's getting changed out now is, from what I understand, is the telephone system. And that thing is only like 12 years old, but of course, it's out of date. And in 2015, if it's not replaced, then there's issues there.
Okay.
On that.
So this question is for Wheeler. Can you guys communicate with PD car-to-car?
If we switch over to their frequency, yes.
Okay. So you have to switch over to their radio system?
Yes. Unless the dispatchers are talking to themselves within, which is within the center.
Okay.
Okay. One thing that is, if I may, to speak to Gary directly, here presented 911, the previous newspaper article, in my mind, and not to pick on Jeff, it presented the vision that I and Sheriff White were wanting to disassociate from the current dispatch system we have. I just wanted to publicly say that that is not accurate. We want to be proactive and work with the current system we have to make sure there is value in it. In reading the article, it appeared that myself and the sheriff had a meeting. Here's your option, commission, we're gonna go from there. That could not be any further from accuracy than I'm telling you right here. All we're doing is at the behest of the commission, examining the value to assure that it is appropriate with what level of dispatch we're doing. And I just wanted to publicly say that. That article, if you read it from an aspect of having no knowledge, it put myself and the sheriff in a position that we are not in. And I just wanted to publicly say that.
Thank you.
Yep.
I didn't read the article.
You should've. You should've. I should've read the article, yeah. I did see the Channel 17 report, and it was very accurate.
I'm kinda, I'm kinda lost here a little bit because the county chiefs are gonna, the fire chiefs are going to meet tomorrow. We didn't get a meeting put together. We've got a couple guys doing surgery and a couple things going on. We weren't, we weren't, we weren't available to get together till tomorrow. We, we agree with everything Gary said, point, point by point by point. The big issue through the conversations on the telephone was the ring down or the transferring of calls. We feel like it's gonna delay response for the first responders. So we're going to try to bring the commission. We do not believe we're gonna have anything for this year's budget. We don't think we can put anything together for this year's budget. We are gonna try to bring you some kind of plan and idea from the fire chiefs back to the commission in the next month or so. So that was the discussion over the phone calls. So I can't really speak as the, as the leadership of that group because they haven't given me authority other than to be in the chairperson. So on your clarification, Chris, on the MoS-WIN versus the V fires, the V channels, there's a lot of channels that the federal government has put out in place where we can't communicate car-to-car. Those are all available to all of us. The county fire system is a V system. It's not a MoS-WIN system. We just replaced all our repeaters and all the things in the county. And actually, we've got an agreement with the sheriff that says if their system goes down, they can come to our system in emergency situations. So the redundancy on the two systems, I don't want you to get to picture that one system's better than the other system because I don't believe it is. I think it's just a different way approaching the problem. In fact, the fact that we have two systems out there is a positive thing for, for us. If MoS-WIN goes down, I know the sheriff switches back to their V fire, or V law channels and operates that way.
We now have, we have an old, our old repeater.
Okay.
We have up front, and we do have redundancy built into it. The difference for us is our coverage is phenomenally better than it's ever been.
You were, you were, you were, you didn't have the coverage you needed. Agreed with you 100%. In fact, that's why the agreement was in place in the Henley area. You would go to our repeaters because you couldn't reach out. Understand. So just, I wanted a little clarification there that, that the redundancy in the two different systems is not a bad thing. So with that being said, I think we'll come back to you with, in the near future with some other ideas. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Peewee?
Yup, yup.
Yeah, unfortunately, we broadcast now, unlike, unlike back in the old days.
We never had that modern stuff. I'm live. Well, looking around the room, I guess I am the old man here now. But I was on the commission since 95, and the 911 system, just for a lot of people that don't know it, was set up as a joint communication system. And we're supposed to work together. We didn't have room up here at the county. I wouldn't hear when it was set up. So it got put down in the city hall, which was fine. And it just kindly made to roll over into the Jeff City 911 system. All in all, I think they've done a pretty neat job for us. But our 911 meetings now, and I'm just talking for myself, I'm not talking for Gary and him, but I feel it's just a, just a get-together. They tell us what happened, what they bought, what we're gonna do, and we go home. I don't feel like any of the problems really are addressed to us, but I guess we're just an advisory committee. We're really not supposed to have that much, I so. I mean, used to, when we had our 911 meetings, we were, had representatives from a lot of the other departments that we would hear the problems. I mean, I've even heard from the other departments, they don't even know when our 911 meetings are so they can come. But I think all that needs to be addressed on that. My problem with having our own 911 system is working together that our public knows, you know, that the calls get sent to the right place. Because anyone knows when you have a heart attack or anything else, seconds do count. And that's what I'm looking at for the best service. And before, if someone would ask me to make my suggestion on what to do from here, I would say I would have to sit down with the rural fire departments, which have always been very dear to my heart, sheriff's department, ambulance service, and emergency management, to see what their actual thoughts one-on-one is on this. I mean, I can see going on our own. I was the one that argued. I was the one that argued with the city just about every year. I was on the commission on the prices and trying to work something out. And, uh, I think while I was on there, the communications did get better with our rural fire departments. Because at first, I think we had a lot of problems, but I didn't think it was quite as bad. Mike might, uh, disagree with that, but I thought it got better there for a while. But I'm glad y'all are looking into it and, uh, I'm available if, uh, I can be of any help to y'all. Thank you.
Thanks, Peewee, appreciate it. Jim, did you have anything?
You know, I really don't have any, any recommendations, but I think, uh, we oughta try to work things out and, and the, the problem that you're, your ongoing problem with the tones is, that, that needs to be addressed and fixed, if possible. If not, then that's a very good reason to go on your own. It just seems, uh, to me that, um, it should be a perfect fit to work together with the city and county and, and the fire chiefs and, and the ambulance service all together. But if it can't work, it can't work. I know you're on a short timetable, but, uh, to hire the people to get your own set up by October fifteenth, that's, that's not a doable thing. So, um, the, I think the, probably the best thing to do would be sign with the city and then really get into it deeply in the next, uh, six or eight months and, and go for it.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, Mike?
Everybody keeps talking about not getting.
We actually have a segment in the county chiefs association where we actually talk about the problems for nine one one. And they have dispatchers there and their representative from the city is there. And ninety-nine percent of the time, they get resolved at that level. And we actually have developed a form where we pass that information back to the city and, and they, at that level. And they deal with it. Now, when they, when they don't deal with it, that's when we go to the nine one one. And, and I think that's a good way of dealing with it. If they're dealing with it one-on-one, if after two or three months we don't get resolved, then we send it to the nine one one. And that's how it's been handled in the past. So I don't want the perception that they're not being responsive because they are.
And, and that was, and that was the theory of setting up the nine one one advisory committee was, um, you know, if, if issues couldn't be worked out directly, one-on-one, then they could come to the committee. If the committee could not get the issues worked out, then they would probably come to the commission and we would have, you know, and, and to the council, directly to the council. And it would be an addressing of elected officials to elected officials. And we've never had any issues brought to us, that I recall, since the nine one one advisory committee came up. Um, I don't know if the advise, I don't know if the advisory committee reports directly to the city council. I mean, makes a report to the city council. Probably would not be a bad idea in the future for periodically for the advisory committee, once a year, once every, twice a year, something like that, to come and make a report to us and make a report to the city council. If everything's going well, that should be a fun report.
So, Mike, I got a question. Um, so just, just out of curiosity, how does the city dispatch? Or how do they alert you guys as to a, a fire or accident or, or whatever? Do they actually dispatch you or do they just send a tone and then you guys dispatch on your own?
No, they actually do the dispatching. They receive the call, uh, they, they press our independent, every fire department in the county has an independent tone. They hit that tone, uh, and then they tell us. We've actually developed where we get it on, we're getting our, our pages on iPhones and, and through our paging system. Uh, we own the paging system, the county chiefs own the paging system. Uh, I think it's four years ago, we came to the commission and did a joint venture purchase to upgrade everything. So you all actually have ownership in the system. But yes, they dispatch us and we've worked pretty hard in what they call E nine one one, where, where we actually get those pages on our iPhones now. So, and, and they are working with us. There's been a few bumps in the road, but for the most part, they're working with us. And to Peewees, it was worse. And, and through the commission and all the workings of the nine one one committee over the years, it has gotten better, so. Have any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Sam?
No.
No. Anybody else? All right, well, Mike, if you'll come back and let us know what the chiefs say. I mean, it seems to me that at this point, we're running out of time. And run out of time means just renewing the contract or sending them a different draft of a contract, which perhaps we may wanna do just to emphasize some of these issues. And Peewee, Jim, Gary, thank you all for your service in the commission. We really do appreciate it. Hopefully you guys will agree to serve some more. So, and thank you all for taking time out of your day today to come in. I mean, we really do appreciate it. I know it was short notice, but, um, this kinda snuck up on us a little bit too. So, thank you guys very much. We really do appreciate it. And we will move on the agenda now, if that's okay? Yep. Inmate release program.
I'm good.
All right. Hey Greg, could you grab that microphone and move it down towards you? That way we'll have two of them down in that neck of the woods. Let's talk about the inmate release program, which is the shackling discussion that we had. Is that last week or two weeks ago?
Last week, sir.
Last week. So I'm not sure who's on deck next. I know Greg, we asked you to get us some, uh, numbers. And I believe you sent around an email saying that the variable cost is thirty-seven dollars or so per inmate?
Well, and plus the, the food, it comes out to about forty-six dollars and forty-four cents, if I remember off the top of my head.
And that's the variable cost per inmate?
The thirty-seven part of it, it, whether, those are all, that's, that's the non-brick and mortar cost. Is that a good way to say that?
Well, I guess what we're looking for is, is that the incremental cost of each inmate?
Yes.
So when we're looking at what the cost of shackling is, that's the number we compare to?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I disagree.
Well, if you, if you look at the brick and mortar cost, that's the seventy-eight dollar cost.
That's the cost that we need to look at.
I disagree. We're gonna pay that, we're gonna pay the difference between the forty-six and the seventy-eight, was that thirty-two dollars? If we have zero people in the jail, we pay that cost.
Well.
But it goes down for our inmate.
Yeah.
So I can see both sides of it.
I mean, that, that brick, that brick and mortar cost is, is growing every day. I mean, the maintenance and everything else. I mean, at some point, there's, there's a maintenance issue with the brick and mortar on the whole building.
But, 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 but I guess what we're looking at is, is when you're trying to figure out the cost and savings from going, from taking somebody out of the jail and having them on a shackle, the brick and mortar cost doesn't really change. You know, we, we owe three million dollars a year on our bonds. If we have a hundred and eighty people in the jail, we owe three million dollars a year on our bonds. If we have zero people in the jail, we owe three million dollars a year on our bonds. So that, that number, if we, if we evacuate the jail, we still owe it. So what I was trying to get is, what's the diff, what's the actual cost that each individual inmate adds or subtracts from the bottom line?
Right. I mean, I, I get your point there, but at some point in twenty twenty or whenever that thing's paid for, we still need to put three million dollars into that jail every year. I mean, cause otherwise we get into a situation of the courthouse over here and it falls in such disrepair that, that we gotta spend a ton of money to get it fixed, so.
No, I agree, in twenty twenty-three, when it's paid off, you know, the rate declines a little bit, the tax rate does. But I agree, there will be maintenance costs, there will be facility upgrade issues.
So, I mean, I, I see your point a little bit, but I mean, it's still, you know, at the same time, I think, I mean, whether it's, whether it's forty-seven or, cause you gotta count the meals and stuff too and the, and the, uh, and the insurance, so.
And the seventy-eight is the crit, is the number, you know, if we're gonna bring in outside inmates, that's the number we charge. Because that defrays all of our costs. And I think that's important. But when we're looking at spending our own money internally, that fixed cost doesn't really come into play as much.
Okay, sorry. Anyway, whether it's seventy-eight or forty-six.
I'm not gonna get down the weeds with you.
What, what's the, uh, what's the cost to do the shackling?
If we do the shackling program, we, uh, we looked at ten people being on the shackling program, just as a base number. If we use, um, the, there's, there are several options on the electronic monitoring program. You have a monitoring that you can do with a existing telephone line. You have the monitoring you can do with a cell phone line. You have the monitoring that involves GPS. Uh, those are the three types of, of home monitoring systems that you have. Uh, the cost I can give you based upon ten units, uh, for the cell phone monitoring is a four twenty-four a day, which comes out to about fifteen thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. If we use, uh, ten units of the, um, existing telephone line, it's a dollar seventy-two a day. So we're talking about six thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. If we use the GPS unit, uh, the GPS unit is about, for ten units at four dollars and five cents a day, is fourteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars a day. I would suggest that we would look at a variance of whichever we could use, certainly the least expensive. If it's, if it's providing us the service provided and when people have existing phone lines, I would suggest we use that. But we also have the capabilities of the other units. Uh, the issue with the GPS is it's more labor intensive for the individual monitoring. So the individual that has, um, to respond to alerts that come in on it, it would take more manpower on that aspect of it. Uh, the other thing I think you need to take in consideration is we use a lot of, I'm sorry.
Uh, I wanna, I thought from our discussion last week, the cost per day included monitoring.
It does.
Okay. So it would just be a contract with some company?
Correct.
So, I don't mean this in a bad sense, it doesn't really matter if it's more intensive or not?
Well, we have to respond to it. I mean.
Oh, okay, okay.
You understand that, that with a GPS, because you get a lot more data, you have to, you have to filter that data. So, uh, for an example, on GPS, it tracks an individual around all day long. Well, if I have that much information, I have to filter that information to see if he's going to an area that I don't want him in, or he's doing something I don't wanna do. So I would have to review that for that day.
So what's the staffing cost?
The staffing cost, I think, uh, what we're looking at is adding an additional part-time person to help us with the monitor.
And that would be regardless of which system?
Yes.
Cause it sounds to me like the GPS system would require more staff.
No, I, I don't anticipate us using a lot of the GPS. GPS to me would be on, uh, you're talking about high-risk cases to begin with, which is something we're not really prepared to go into anyway, on most of the time.
Right.
Uh, so, I mean, if you're talking about GPS, you may be talking about a domestic issue or a, a sexual predator type of issue, which is something we probably wouldn't be involved in that much. The only interesting thing about GPS is it is actually, uh, twenty cents cheaper than the cell phone. But again, the thing you have to realize is it's, it's more work on the other end for us monitoring that.
And what's the, what, what would you budget in as a part-time cost?
The part-time cost, I think what we're talking about is twenty dollar, twenty dollars an hour for the employee, looking at the employee with, uh, uh, working about twenty to twenty-nine hours of, of week.
We're trying to keep it around twenty-four hours a week, three days a week would be it.
So you're thinking twenty thousand a year, give or take? Yes?
Twenty, twenty-five, something like that. I don't know what it adds up to. We added up the other day, I can't remember what it was. The only other problem we had is I haven't talked to sheriff, but we gotta do something with the phone cause we get, we'd probably buy a phone, buy minutes to call these people back instead of using our own personal phone.
So that's, um, if it's twenty-five thousand dollars a year for part-time, and you're basing this on using ten inmates, right? That's the, that's kinda the numbers we're all working off of here?
That's the numbers I'm working on. However, uh, there's one other thing I, I need to include in that ten is, is the sobriety link. A lot of times we use for DWI people, we use a sobriety link. Uh, there's basically two types, um, the, and, uh, the cost for them is seven and seven dollars and sixty-five cents a day. Uh, the one unit is a unit that you wear around the ankle that constantly monitors the offender. And, uh, then you have another unit that on order, they blow into. There's a camera actually hooked into it, so you get the picture of the individual. They have the identification feature, the monitoring center would be able to identify that person as the person you have under supervision, uh, through their equipment that they have. And then that individual would be required to blow into the system. The, the good thing about that since, system is it's not as labor intensive for the monitoring people like me that would be here. Because with the other system, because of so much alcohol and everything we use on a daily basis, you get false readings. And you have to investigate those false readings. So, I mean, it, as far as what we would choose is that piece of equipment would be something we would look at.
The sobriety link was how much?
Seven to seven sixty-five, seven or seven sixty-five.
Six fifty to seven.
Oh, is it six fifty to seven?
Yeah.
Sorry. I don't know how to get seven sixty-five, is what I wrote down.
And so if we base.
He wrote it down too, so I'm feeling good.
If we base that on two units, which is what we basically based it on, you're talking about between five thousand for the, uh, five thousand one hundred and ten dollars for the seven dollar and four thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars for the six fifty.
How many of those people do you anticipate using?
We were thinking two.
Two?
We have used those in the past.
Yes.
But, so on those sobriety links and the shackle, that would be probably a direct cost that we could recoup from the people wearing those.
Certainly that's what we would like to do.
And is there, is there any way to recoup any of the cost of the staffing that would have to monitor them as well?
I, um, I think that's something that we need to talk with the judges about and set whatever fee they wanna set it at as far as the equipment and how much cost they would want to, uh, to put on that equipment. Right now, an offender that we have under these systems are paying between ten and fourteen dollars a day.
Yeah, that's about right. Okay.
So, I mean, certainly.
Cause I calculate that the employee, if you're just doing ten, the employee cost is give or take six dollars and eighty-five cents a day per inmate.
It's a rough number, I mean.
So if you add that plus the cost of shackle, you're about eleven bucks. If you have to do the sobriety link, it's a little different number.
I was just curious on that, uh, on that part-time help. I mean, is that, I mean, I would think that you'd kinda be working some off-hours rather than eight to five. You might be working some evenings, some weekends. I mean, especially if you're monitoring with sobriety link or something like that, or?
We have a good working relationship with these guys. And I don't really want us, the marshals, going out their houses and doing anything. When I've called for people now, that's the difference in us and doing the bonds where anybody else is that if we have somebody that's doing something bad, I immediately call one of these two guys or get a hold of, one of the, one of the Padres and we get it picked up. And it's been really quick in the pickup. I had one that was about four weeks and he's up in St. Louis. It was four weeks to six weeks while I finally found him.
Right.
But that was the one we've had out. But otherwise, we picked him up immediately. And if we start getting questions on him, we'll talk to the judge. And the judges have yanked him back in. Judge Beadham's yanked two or three back in, left him in jail for two or three weeks, brought him back in and spoke to him and let him back out.
I guess my question wasn't on how you enforce it, I was just on the monitoring of those.
The monitoring will hit you all any time there's a violation, right?
Yeah. Basically what, uh, I think we've talked about is we would have an on-call status. It's probably what we're talking about, the individual that you're talking about. Uh, I think what we're looking for is someone to share in what I'm doing as far as supervising reports and that type of thing, plus do the monitoring. You know, it would be something that probably would be shared between the three of us. Uh, I think with the alert system, we could, uh, we could set up a policy on how we responded to alerts and what we did so it would not be as labor intensive. And a lot of things I think we can deal with on the monitoring system, depending on the type of client we have and what the alert is, we'll deal with the next day. And we will constantly each week have the offender coming in to us that's on the monitoring system. So we're in constant contact with him and working with him on how this monitoring's going.
Okay.
I think the, the key element. I think the, the key element, I believe, in this whole thing is being to reach out and touch. I mean, you know, where you're actually working with this guy, and he knows you're watching him, and that you're involved in watching him.
Our, our portion of this, that, that I'm comfortable with, is that when the judge issues a pickup order verbally or in writing, if they issue the pickup order, we go execute court orders. That's part of our responsibility in, in Chapter Fifty-seven, not a big deal. They're doing the actual monitoring, we're not doing the monitoring. The tracking is done electronically, as opposed to people going out and doing verifications. The pickups, we've got no issue with. This person, I support it, this has been a good program for us. And I'm assuming this person would work for Richard, is that correct?
How many people do we have out on a shackle right now?
Uh, right now, we probably have, uh, four on shackle at this moment.
So, you're assuming if we did this, we would have fourteen out?
Well-
Would be ten more, or are you including the four that are already out?
The issue is with shackling right now is payment. And we've tried to be very, uh, resistant to just putting people out on shackling, just for putting them out on shackling. We've been trying to make sure that, that we're putting the appropriate person on shackling. We're doing it for a period of time. If they're showing us they can go out and be productive and do things that we've asked them to do, then we may ask the court to back off the shackling and allow them to go out there without it. So, I mean, we have tried very hard to use it in a positive manner, uh, as far as, as doing it, because, uh, there is, that's a significant cost to someone that's also trying to pay a bondsman, who may also be trying to hire an attorney who is involved in making restitution and all those things.
Okay.
I think the other issue you look at too, is at the end of the day, when the, when he's done with his sentence, as opposed to a seventy-eight dollar a day jail bill, the offender may have a, you know, a, a significantly less, uh, court cost bill for his, uh, period of incarceration or, or supervision.
So, just, uh, I mean, do we purchase the shackles themselves, or?
No, we would-
So, we just, we just get them as we need them?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're only incurring cost if somebody's actually using it?
That's correct.
So, there wouldn't be like an idle rate that you would pay, is like, I know Juvenile currently does GPS tracking, and they pay an idle rate, they guarantee so many a day, and we pay an idle rate for anyone who we're not using, would there be any kind of charge for that?
The only one we have an issue with is the sobrieter. I mean, we call and they'll bring, they'll send the units into us, so if we anticipate someone going into the program, and right now, we have a situation where we don't release them until they're actually hooked up, so hopefully, we would anticipate and we could get the units in. And, and the ten dollars a day is based upon us having ten people on some type of unit every day. Uh, I don't anticipate that occurring, but we, we were trying to look at a figure of how many we could manage.
We don't think we would have ten, ten a day on a shackle.
We may or we may not, depending on, on the circumstances.
I mean, ten, ten a day, assuming that they would not bond out-
Correct.
And assuming they would not get pre-trial release. Uh, ten a day saves us a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
That's correct.
But, if it's two a day, it doesn't save us anywhere near as much, obviously.
That's correct.
So, I mean, it would be, if we went to this, we'd want to encourage people to be on it, as opposed to, it would be better to have twenty a day than to have ten a day, than to have four a day.
I can tell you, my reports will reflect, given this individual, this is my recommendation. Now, as far as the court releasing them or doing that, I can't, you know, say-
Far as the minutes.
But, but with that tool, I think you look at a different type of client, because it, I think if you look at, we, what we look at right now, our average score, uh, based upon our scoring, is mostly in the moderate range of individual, which may be someone you want to look at putting out on the GPS initially, to make sure he's going to follow your, your program and do what you're asking him to do.
If they stay in jail, we bill them, right?
Exactly.
Or, we bill the state if they get convicted, right?
You would have, I-
What? If it's a felony, we bill the state. If it's a misdemeanor, we bill the, we don't bill the incarcerated person for their board?
We don't, we don't retain that money. Is that correct, boss?
Say that again.
Misdemeanors, we don't get, if they get convicted, we don't get any money back from them.
So, we're, we're paying for them to stay with us.
Right.
So, it's direct savings.
Yes.
And we could potentially get them to recoup some of it.
Yes.
I like that option.
And, and one other factor I'd just kind of bring up, just from my Department of Corrections background, is, there is a point of incarceration with staff, to where the addition of additional people in your jail adds additional cost by transportation, uh, moving, uh, people around, transporting to court, and all those things. And I don't know what the comfort level is with the existing staff you have, but I think there is a point where, uh, it becomes an issue, yes.
Less is best.
Yeah.
And that's, that's built into the thirty-seven dollars out of that forty-six.
Is the reimbursement, is that something the judge orders once the sentencing is done? And how does that get onto their bill, as far as the shackle?
Well, and, and we're in the stages now, I went and talked with, uh, Ms. Davidson yesterday about the clerk and that issue, um, and, and I think what we're looking at is, is, um, first off, I think we're going to talk, we're, we're looking at, you know, trying to encourage them to pay as they go. Um, if, if we've got them out there working in community to start putting money into this, so that once they conclude or get sentenced, you don't have restitution, court costs, your EM, or your pre-trial service bill, all at the end. But, certainly, that's how probably it would end up, is at the end, whenever the case is finalized, it would, I would have to submit a bill to, uh, the circuit court for them to collect.
One thing to consider on this, and this is a philosophical, it's not a numbers issue, the, these people are not, are not legitimately criminals until the courts have adjudicated them as such. So, they're innocent until proven guilty. So, what we're doing is, we're, we're, we're being as constitutional as possible, and I think the judges have been over backwards in this, and so have you all, on ensuring that people that do not have to be sitting in jail are, are not sitting in jail, and that opens it up for more space for those people that are convicted to be serving time. And that's, those are the people we want in jail.
I mean, I'm all, I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense, and it's something we should start down the path on.
Yeah.
It looks like the cost, I mean, the real cost to us is maybe hiring a part-time person, that's an actual sunk cost, because we'd have to have them. The rest of the cost is just people we put on, we just get savings out of.
Well, but even with that part-time person, we could, I mean, if we charged ten to fourteen dollars a day, we'd recoup some of that cost as well, so, um, I mean, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good program. I mean, I think we have to be careful, you know, and I think you guys are doing a good job of, of doing a, a, uh, evaluation on, on those guys, and, and for the most part, I think most people that are in there for a misdemeanor probably should be getting kicked out, but, uh, um, only other question I had is, is, uh, I mean, we have a lot of drug offenders, and a lot of people that are using drugs, I mean, is there a way, is there any type of system out there that monitors if somebody's on a shackle or whatever, or is this a sobrieter link check to see if they're, they're high, or, I mean, no?
No, there's, there's nothing out there. Basically, we, we pull them in, and we actually do drug testing on them to ensure-
Yeah.
That they're, and, and we've had some dirties. I mean, you know, you, that's, that's part of what you do with these folks.
So, that's just something you have to do once a week, or whatever timeframe you decide?
Depends on the individual, depends on the drug.
Right.
I mean, some drugs, you know, THC stays in your system a long time, cocaine is much shorter, just depends on drug of choice.
Okay.
Chris, one thing to add, I, I agree with what you just said, but I wanted to point out, over the years, there's been times that Richard and I have been nose-to-nose over issues, but I'm going to tell you, this has worked, because I, I think, a word I don't use much, Richard has done a magnificent job with this.
That's high praise, I've never heard him say that.
He has made this program work. He and I, other jurisdictions are going to try it, it's going to work, if they get somebody of this caliber doing it, and it's not if they don't.
We, I talked to Kristen about salaries, and that's why we put the salary at twenty dollars an hour. We've got to find the right person to put into the second piece in here.
I agree.
It's finding somebody really good to put in here, you know. Like I said, it works both ways. When I call these guys and need something, get somebody picked up, they jump right on it, and one officer at the police department, if you see him, Modelini, he's arrested a couple for me too. So, if you see him, thank him, he's really, they do excellent jobs. I've called Witter, and they've had, he'll call me thirty minutes later, this guy's already shackled up, he's coming into jail now. So, I mean, it kind of teaches a personal lesson, if they don't do what they're supposed to do, they come right back to jail, so.
Jeff?
Uh, Donnie, we talked about this a while back, and I don't remember if it was something that I found, or something you gave me about people that provide the shackle service. Why wouldn't we just do that, and have them do it instead of us doing it? I don't know if you addressed this before or not, but I don't even know what I do with the paperwork, so I apologize, but-
We've, we've talked about that before, Don, or is it, we can have better control of it this way, knowing what's going on, wouldn't you say, biggest part of it? Well, it's ownership, number one, is, is a key word, and the other thing is, is we would have to monitor them, as, and, and look at their stuff coming in. Right now, we're, we are kind of in a situation where we rely upon electronic monitoring, these folks that are providing the service, and we really don't know, uh, what they're doing, because we don't get the alerts, we don't know what's going on with these folks. We're relying upon what they tell us about this.
That's when you fire them, though, if they're not doing a good job, you find out somebody's doing something, or they don't show up to court, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the ultimate, but you have to have a provider. And, and right now, uh, we have two providers, uh, that, that are contracting with these folks.
Basically, so you don't trust them doing it?
No, I'm not saying I don't trust them, I'm just saying that that's another element of monitoring.
If we have to monitor them, I see it as we don't trust them.
It adds a step to the equation.
I'm just saying, if they're going to be doing it, let them do their job, we're paying them and do it. Um, I mean, we can say we don't trust our auditors, we want to go back and recheck their work, because we don't trust their work, or we got to check them, I mean-
So, losses too.
I didn't mean our, our office, I mean, we, we have outside auditors, so you go back and check their audit, say, I don't know if that's right or wrong, we look through it, but if they find something, we got to trust that they're doing their job, just like the outside monitor doing this, we would.
There's been some experience over the years that have indicated that it's more efficient to do it this way.
That's where I'm probably getting at. I'm not really paying for it. If they want to be out of jail, they can eat the cost of being shackled and being free. I mean-
It, I, I don't mean you a philosophical, but there's also an issue is, Mark makes more money than I do, and so, it, and, if, if everything were equal, I get to go to Europe as often as Mark does, just because, not because I can afford it. The difference is, criminally, there are people that deserve to be out on this, that will not be able to pay, to pay a full rate on it, that might have to be prorated, uh, at some point.
They shouldn't get in trouble.
I, I agree, but if you look at-
I know stuff happens, and, you know, there's, even when kids get in trouble, you're not going to keep them in jail, they're low-flight risk, they're-
I just don't want to run into that.
Not going to be there. So, you put a shackle on them, you know, in high school, I had a friend that had this shackle on him, you know, where, we was playing hacky sack, we made fun of, we'd go outside to circle, play hacky sack and laugh at him, because he couldn't come out there with us. But, he wasn't in jail, I mean, it wasn't taking up space in there, and, so, I, I guess I look at it a little bit differently, and I, I think it's a great service, though, don't get me wrong, I'm just-
There is a cycle that unfortunately does hit poor people, you know, and all it takes is a speeding ticket. I mean, honestly, all it takes is a speeding ticket, and you can be in a cycle where you're in jail.
Or late fees on your tax assessment.
Now, you'll be jailed for that.
Yeah, but that, that causes hardship on you.
But, what I'm saying is, you can end up in, not, I'm not talking about a hardship, I'm talking about ending up in jail. You know, you have a speeding ticket, and you're working a hourly job, and you can't get off work to go to court, which is not in the evening anymore, it's only during the daytime.
Send your fine in.
Okay? And you don't have the money to pay the fine, because the speeding ticket's quite expensive nowadays, ain't cheap.
Sell your car, you have a car to speed, but sell it, buy bicycle.
Maybe you're not guilty.
Yeah. And what if you didn't speed?
Get an attorney.
How do you pay for that when you're making minimum wage? I mean, the reality of it is, it's a cycle, and once you get in the wrong side of the cycle, it's very hard to get out of it.
How many people get sick from speeding? I've seen a lot of guys come into court, and they'll have an eighty-dollar ticket. They'll ask for time to pay it, it takes six, sixty days, they'll give them sixty days-
Oh, because they got to go buy their drugs?
They'll give them six, no, they'll give them sixty days to pay the ticket. They might pay five dollars that month, five dollars the next, and they have a court date to come back to renew that. They miss the court date, so they get a two-hundred-dollar bond set on them, they get picked up, and they go to jail, they're sent to jail for two or three days, they'll pay a bondsman, fifty bucks to get out of there.
So, I'm the taxpayer, and I'm supposed to foot the bill for him, screwing up.
No, I'm not saying I'm-
Are you footing the bill?
This is how, this is how they get in the system, that's how, that's how they stay back.
But, I can afford to pay the full rate, you're going to charge me a full rate, because I can afford it. Just like meals at school, I can afford to pay the full rate, I'm going to pay it. I can't get grants for my kids to go to college, because I make too much money. But, other people that aren't working, they can get grants and go for free. Who's paying it?
Well, as a society-
Government?
We're better off having people working and holding down jobs than we are having in jails.
Jeff, I had a young man in yesterday, who is supposed to be doing service. Judge Sodergrin told him he had to do twenty hours of community service. Well, I take care of community service for the city municipal court. Brian Stumppe sent him up to me. And he had gone down to CASA, because they sent him to CASA for community service. It's a hundred and twenty dollars that he has to pay CASA. He didn't have a hundred and twenty, so I wanted to know if he could do community service through me, and I called Judge Sodergrin's office, and they said, no, he's got to go through CASA. I don't know what he's going to do, he didn't have a hundred and twenty dollars. So, I mean, there are, he, and he was young, he was probably eighteen, nineteen.
Probably smokes, and was wearing some nice, uh, shoes, or whatever they, puts the, didn't work for shoes now.
So, he, so he goes to jail, and it costs us seven hundred and eighty dollars a day?
Do the crime, pay the time.
And the taxpayers pay five times as much. It's a good deal, good deal for taxpayers, isn't it?
So, otherwise, you leave him out, or he's a threat to society. Who's out in Northville stealing stuff? The probably the same ones that you're worried about, they're a hundred and twenty dollars. They got to get their fix for the night, they're going to go find a park.
I mean, I always think, question that the drug issue is a significant problem, and one that's very hard to address. And, you know, it is-
The fact that we, we have the drug problems, um, and we have this comprehensive scheme where, you know, drugs drag you down, they cause all the other impediments to it, we won't legalize the drugs, so having them becomes a crime. Um, you, it's just, it's a terrible cycle that a lot of people are in, there's no way out of it, for most people, unless we come up with alternatives like this. And somebody being able to get clean, like the D, the drug court, is a great alternative program. We pay for part of that. But, if you can get somebody clean, and get them to keep a job and not get back on drugs, that serves a benefit to the whole community.
Since Christie's not here, I think it's a public health issue.
I think you're seeing the-
I don't have a problem with-
All right, I think we should move forward on this. What do you guys think?
Yeah, I'm good.
So, what do you guys need?
We, I need, Richard and I need to sit down with the, these two that are all kind of, you know, with the, with one of the judges, two of the judges, and kind of work things out.
I mean, I don't know that this needs to come back to us. There's significant cost savings. When you guys are ready to hire somebody, then we'll have to do a budget adjustment. If it's this year, I assume it would be.
It'll be next year. It gives us time to get everything drawn up. Like, he's talking about the guidelines that we receive phone calls for. That's going to take us sixty days to figure out what we're going to get phone calls or what we're not going to get a bar.
Works for me. Guys? Sam?
I don't like that.
All right.
The only other thing, a question I had is on this thing here, we were starting talking yesterday, is that right now, there's a lot of it for phones. I might not buy a phone in this thing, which is by Minnesota phones. We call these people back, so we're not using our personal phones to call them. I talked to, uh, our computer guy.
Can't they use the phone in my office?
Why can't we use landlines to make phone calls?
It's on weekends, nights.
Well, on the on-call basis, we may have to on, on weekends or at night or different times, there, there'll be an issue where we may have to contact someone or, and, and talk to them directly, um, on certain, certain pieces of these, of this equipment. So, uh, you know.
We already got a cellphone reimbursement program.
Why don't you guys, why don't, these are the, I don't mean to vassal, these are the details you guys got to work out.
That's what we're talking about.
These are the devils.
Well, it's, you can get so far down the weeds where you can never get your handle on what's going on. You guys need to come up with a package and it's be able to justify it. That's what it comes down to.
Definitely, if we, Kristen and I provide the purchases.
Thank you guys very much. We really appreciate it. Richard, great work. Thank you very much. Donnie, thank you very much.
Thanks, Richard, Don.
Greg, John, thank you all. Kristen, thanks for your help. I got, uh, you guys know about Bill Farr. We got two new grants that are coming in. One is for a new generator through R-SOC.
Another one?
Yep. Big one.
Other, just like the other two?
I think this is a really big one.
Bigger than those?
Yeah, it's one of the big, they can actually run the wells if we have, uh, water supply go down. And then we also got the, uh, MEOC, is it Maintenance and Upkeep?
Yeah.
He's like, when, when the grant stuff comes in, we'll get more information.
See, I read something about that one. I didn't remember seeing the one about that.
Yeah, there was two of them that we got.
Okay.
Um, the other, only other issue I have is this wayfinding. Um, are you guys familiar with the wayfinding project the city's doing?
Yeah.
Um, they're working with ArcTuris. We got an email, I got an email. I don't know who was on it. So I don't know if you guys got it or not from Sonny Sanders.
I saw it, yeah.
Uh, they need to come up with a fifty thousand dollar match. Do we want to put money into the match? Do we want to just do a resolution in endorsing it? What do we want to do there?
I'm fine endorsing. I don't know about the match. I'm, the wayfinding thing, I'm not, I'm still-
Thought that was through Campo.
Yeah, but we still got to match twenty percent.
Right.
It's eighty, twenty, so the twenty percent that they're going for. I, it's one of the things that we're getting money to do a bunch of signs and stuff, and they're going to be, they're not just green signs that say go this way. There's, they're going to be, uh, regionally set downtown, um, MPS, East Side, South Side, Old Town. So you can see that.
So is, is fifty thousand the twenty percent that we have to come up with, or is that?
Fifty thousand, the whole community is the twenty percent we come up with. Now, I think they're going, my understanding is they're going to go to the, the city's going to look at it. The various business associations are going to look at it. And it's not going to be, I, nobody's asking, at this point, we haven't been asked specifically for any money.
Yeah, Bob Gower made a presentation to the downtown. I, I don't think most business associations have any money.
The way I kind of looked at it too is we have the money that we give for city-county projects, and if they want to use it for that, I don't know if we have anything left from this cycle.
So, I mean, is, is the wayfinding for the whole city, or is it just for a certain project, or, I mean, it makes sense to me.
I think the grant is the, is the whole project.
It's coming like fifty-four, it's coming in on fifty, it's, um-
I mean, is-
Lafayette or Lafayette, did it change?
I, I guess, I don't know. I don't, I don't really understand it, so I mean, I don't-
I think it's going to be like designated districts. So if you're Old Town, you come into the city, you'll have a sign off at fifty-four or fifty, probably fifty, I guess. No fifty-four, I might have it too, but it'd-
I mean, so our portion's fifty, and so we're talking their portions.
The whole community, the whole community's portion is fifty. MoDOT puts in two hundred.
Right, so that's two hundred and fifty thousand. So I'm thinking this is a lot more than just a few local community signs. It's, I mean, is it, is it signs on the highway that MoDOT replaces?
No, they're, it, it, it's not really a kiosk, but it's-
No, they're nice signs.
It's a, they're, yeah, they're, um-
So, for example, you might have one that says it's the Capitol District. I'm just making this up. And the Capitol District might be white signs that have a Capitol logo on them. And then everywhere you see the white sign with the Capitol logo, that leads you to the Capitol District. Downtown, there may be a downtown district sign, and maybe it's, uh, I don't know, a streetcar logo on it. And everywhere you see a logo on the streetcar, you know that that's the downtown district. There might be a Munichberg sign. It might have, uh, I don't know, something German on it. And everywhere you see the, the Munichberg sign, it leads you to that. That's my understanding of the concept of wayfinding. I've not seen the presentation or the details, but that's the concept. So these aren't green highway signs. It's decorative.
Hey, what we need to do is have, have Bob Gower come do just a quick presentation.
That might be a good idea.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm not really for endorsing or saying we're going to give them money. I mean-
But yeah, I mean, you're giving a million dollars already for-
Lafayette enhancements.
Yeah, for the beautification.
I would say we should send a letter to support it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't mind supporting it. I'd, I'd like to see a little bit more before I say, yeah, I'm in support of adding a lot more signs all over the place that, uh, nobody pays attention to.